All right. Good evening, everyone. We are live tonight. We are not doing a typical intro. This is a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So I'll call this meeting into order. Want to get one thing out first before we actually get into the meat of the meeting. For those that are, you won't know this, at home that are on Channel 18, but the new software we have here is not talking to the old analog software where this is put out to the general public. So it is being streamed live at home, and we will always have this meeting available on YouTube in a day or two after they upload it to YouTube. So just wanted to get that public service announcement out before we get started into this meeting. And with that, the first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
No move.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Home in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Tonight's meeting is a little different. I'm going to take a minute to talk about a few things. I have talked with the majority of the board and just kind of be the voice of the Commissioners this evening and get a few things out there. To the board, you have paperwork in front of you that is the timeline of things that is going on. There are things in there that are not public, so please hold on to those or give them back to Megan when you're done or Leanne. Some of those things contain information that is not public information, so if anybody asks for them, just hold on to those until we decide we release those or not. As I said, this is a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and I'm going to read a lot, and I apologize. Normally, I just wing it and go off of what I'm saying, but "public comment" is not something we do at a special meeting. This is a meeting for us to discuss things that we need to discuss and is not a regularly scheduled meeting. Public comment is required to be at one meeting a month. This Board of Commissioners has it at two meetings a month. And I'd like to take a moment to remind the public that myself, Ms. Kitty Etheridge, and Bobby Hanig, when we came on, were the ones that moved public comment back to the front of the meetings. Before I arrived here, they were at the end of the meetings. You couldn't talk about anything during the agenda, and you might have to stay till God knows what time if you wanted to speak to the Board of Commissioners. There's been talk in the press, I know about that in social media, I don't really call them press, but there's been talk about it on social media that we need public comment. We don't. This is not for the public. This is sadly Board-level business. It is up to us to make decisions tonight based on information we have that the public does not have and you may never have. So any inference that we don't allow public comment or we have closed, you know, stuff happening behind the scenes is just, it's hogwash. It's laughable. We do our best to make sure that the public has the right to speak. I see many faces in here that are here at my regular meetings, and if I don't have anyone sign up, I always ask to allow someone to speak that didn't sign up, that walked in the room late. And I'll ask several times to make sure that the public is heard. And it doesn't matter, you know, where it's at. In our public hearings, we have, the public has the ability to speak to those. Again, I will always ask and have done so during my time. When Mike Payment was chairman, he did the same thing as well to ensure that the public was heard, if they wanted to be heard, where it was applicable. There are times that you cannot speak when special use stuff, but we have done our best to accommodate you at any point. Tonight's going to be a touchy subject. I do ask that you respect us and our work up here and remain quiet this evening. If we have a bunch of disturbances, we'll ask the deputies to make you leave. We're going to have to get through this tonight, and we have a school board meeting after this. They have graciously moved back a half hour to allow us to have this meeting, so we're going to work through this as best we can so that they are not interfered with. They needed the room for the audio/video equipment this evening for their regular meeting. Lately, you've seen a lot in the social media from Tom Roddy and Blackwater investigations. I'm not sure that he qualifies as press. He might have an LLC that makes him the press, but that's not press. The information he has put out has been just nothing good, and it is filled with half-truths. So when you go to one source, consider that source and ask questions. There are things we cannot talk about that are in closed sessions, and a lot of information was taken out of context, out of closed session, and should not have been in the public. There are things that we do that are discoverable through the public, but you'd never know they were there to discover it. I think one of the best things I've seen lately is a quote, and it's interesting how different circumstances make strange bedfellows. Paul and Christine Beaumont, I have a quote from Tom Roddy's site, and I'm sorry to use your wife's name, Paul, Christine, because she's in this quote. It says, Christine and Paul Beaumont was up early this morning on Facebook saying that we post, what we post here is toxic and incomplete. That was from June 12th of 2022 on Tom Roddy's own site. And yet, we have all this other stuff going on, so it's interesting how strange bedfellows can arrive at a point and try to use it to condemn the county attorney, condemn myself, other members of this board, and just spread false information. Mr. Roddy has a personal ax to ground with the county. Mr. Kevin McCord asked him to step down. We have many, many times, and there are people that are in this room tonight we have had to go into closed session about, and the public knows nothing about it at all because we kept quiet about it. We offered them the opportunity to resign quietly and move on to avoid a public embarrassment. This is a small county ultimately. Small communities are here. So we did that for Mr. Roddy. He made some Uncle Tom comments on social media when he served on a board for us. We met in closed session. We talked about that and gave him the right to step down quietly and not have, you know, that splashed across this board or this meeting. However, I have to take the time to say tonight that we had to do that, and the reason is the stuff he's posting out there is ridiculous, and it makes no sense whatsoever, and this is not the person you think he is at all. With that, I'm going to move into our regular scheduled items tonight. Consent agenda is the first thing that we have up. We have budget amendments and a resolution design, well, a resolution designated public depository and authorizing which are all's. Do any Commissioners have any questions about the consent agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
No move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Home in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up is new business. Item one, considering of a resolution of the Board of Commissioners censuring Commissioner Paul in Beaumont. I know this is a touchy subject this evening. It is not one we come to lightly. It is not one that I'm sure Paul relish is dealing with this evening. Before we jump into that, I have to again take a moment to set the moment, set the record straight on a few things that have been said and occurred. Many have read probably my letter that I put out regarding events that took place recently. The Board of Commissioners, as I mentioned moments ago, has acted in good faith and well within the constraints of our charter and our positions. In doing so, we had closed-session meetings. We learned information about a job posting that should not have been posted. We brought Commissioner Beaumont in, had a quiet word with him to find out what went on. We asked the county attorney to look into it further after that meeting. He was afforded that privacy right that we have done for other people, and yet he claims in social media he did not do that. By the way, Paul, we'll have the opportunity to speak tonight. This is America, and he does have the right to speak and defend himself, so I know some people may have thought that that's not going to be the case, but it is the case. At no time has the Board of Commissioners had secret meetings or votes. I have many, many times, Commissioner Payment has done it when he was chairman, polled the Board via email about a particular action or direction maybe we want to go. As a matter of fact, we do it all the time in closed session. We'll meet with the county attorney and the county manager. They need to know which way the Board wants to go on something, and we give them direction. So that is what happened in closed session. We just meet, we talk about things, and we deal with it in closed session and poll them. We also do it through email. Email is not, does not constitute a meeting because it has to be simultaneous communication. There is no simultaneous communication with email. Owen didn't respond to one of them, I believe, until a day later. So it's not simultaneous, but it is me laying out ideas to the Board about ways to proceed, what we want to do, how they want to proceed, what they want to do, so that I have a general consensus. And then when we go into a meeting, I know how to shape that up, and that happened recently again. As we looked at this censure document, it's our document. It's the Board of Commissioners' document. I am not going to involve Paul on that document. No different than parents that have a child that has done something wrong, go into the room and confer on how to deal with the child, they're not going to bring them in until it's time to deal with that child, meter out that punishment, whatever it's going to be, or counsel the child not to do whatever again. It's been said that that's, that we violated meeting laws or anything else, and that's just simply not the case. We can do that at every step of the way. I have involved our county attorney, and many times Ike, our county manager, who's been an attorney for 30-plus, 40, 35 years now, Ike. Well, he probably wants to think about it at this point in time, but Megan is our new counsel, so she has been involved in this to ensure that the Board handled itself as it should handle itself and that we did not misstep and that we did not do anything that violates our oath of office. Nothing public has come out of here. That was done by Paul Beaumont. Documents were released to the public that came out of closed session. Some of it, that information was redacted, but it still should not be released. It is private information, especially when it deals with personnel. So we're dealing with that tonight. When I, I'm going to read the censure document. It is out there for the public to see, and it lays out a case generally of what the problem is. There are other things that are not in that document because it would be a mile long to have them all in this document. So tonight, we put a basic scope of what the problem was, and a censure, for those of us who don't know what that is, is basically a public reprimand to not do something again. It doesn't carry any teeth. It doesn't kick him off the Board of Commissioners. That is another process called an emotion process, which this Board is not going to do. That is a long, lengthy, very expensive process, and Commissioner Beaumont is not seeking reelection, so this Board is not going to go through that. We have made every attempt to gather information and discuss stuff with Paul prior to any public claims of wrongdoing or taking any action. It has been dragged out a little bit. Those of you who know me know that I ride dirt bikes, crashed and broke my leg, and I have had to go through multiple surgeries, and now I'm on the mend, but it has delayed, caused some time delays. That's why we haven't had any meetings, and we felt as a Board, it was very important that the entirety of the Board be here. This is a big decision and not taken lightly or entered into lightly. So we're here tonight to take that action, and we're not. It depends on how it goes. For the releasing of private or closed-session information, outright false information that was provided to the press, and the creation of a job posting with Insight Global, just some of the information that's contained in the document, as I said earlier, and for brevity's sake, we're not putting it all in there, and there are things that are closed session that you will never hear about from us because we want to protect the sanctity of closed session and keep those items where they belong in closed session. So with that, I'm going to now take a moment to actually read the resolution, and we'll go from there. Paul will have a chance to say what he needs to say and address the public and the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question? After you read that and when Commissioner Beaumont makes his comments, I mean, do the other Commissioners up here, do we have a chance to say anything if we have a question or ask?
You can. This is America. You get to speak, right? We were trying not to go down too many rabbit holes tonight, if at all possible, but, you know, I know Mike has some things he'd like to talk about because he has been mentioned in the press. So this is a resolution of the Kirtuck County Board of Commissioners, censuring Commissioner Paul Beaumont. Whereas pursuant to Section 2-85 of the Code of Ethics, a county commissioner is to obey the law and support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of North Carolina, and the laws enacted by the Congress of the United States and the General Assembly pursuant thereto. And whereas pursuant to Section 2-86 of the Code of Ethics, county commissioners should demonstrate the highest standards of personal integrity, truthfulness, honesty, and fortitude in all their public activities in order to inspire public confidence and trust in county government. County commissioners should participate in establishing, maintaining, and enforcing, and should themselves observe high standards of conduct so the integrity and independence of their office may be preserved. And whereas pursuant to Section 2-87B of the Code of Ethics, a county commissioner is to avoid impropriety and the appearance of impropriety in all county commissioner activities, and should respect and comply with the law, and should conduct themselves at all times in a manner that promotes public confidence and the integrity of the office of county commissioner and county government. And whereas pursuant to Section 2-89 of the Code of Ethics, consistent with the goal of preserving public trust, county commissioners should be aware of the need for discretion and deliberations when the lack of discretion would pose a threat to the resources of the county, to the reputation of current or potential county employees, to orderly and responsible decision-making, to the integrity of other governmental processes, or to the legitimate interests of the county. Commissioner Paul in Beaumont violated the sections of the Kirtuck County Code of Ethics listed herein by doing the following acts. One, following October 16th, 2023, closed session of the Kirtuck County Board of Commissioners pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1186, to discuss personnel matters, Commissioner Beaumont improperly disclosed contents of conversations from the closed session of the Board of Commissioners to other individuals. Item two. In November of 2023, Commissioner Paul Beaumont began conversations with a company called Insight Global. It became clear that Commissioner Paul Beaumont had caused through his interactions with Insight Global a position for county manager to be created. No such position was available, agreed upon by the Board of Commissioners. The county attorney was directed to contact Insight Global to gather more information on how this was created and Commissioner Paul Beaumont's role. Upon speaking with several individuals within Insight Global, to include Insight Global's attorney, it was learned that Commissioner Beaumont was instrumental in the creation of this job, and he informed Insight Global the position needed to be filled by the second week of January. When confronted about this situation, Commissioner Beaumont denied authorizing the posting and denied any knowledge of the position posting to the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Beaumont made false statements to the Daily Advance stating the county manager's contract was voted on but not renewed. And I'm going to take a second here. This is what I was talking about in closed session. We don't vote on stuff in closed session. I can talk to the Board, I can poll the Board, I can go around to each one of them, I can do it tonight. In fact, we will do it Monday at our meeting and ask them what they think. That is quite a different thing from taking a vote. You saw me take a vote when we moved into the agenda, and I took a vote at the consent agenda. That's what a vote looks like. And following on that, Commissioner Payment was somehow involved. So false statements to the Daily Advance stating the county manager's contract was voted on and not removed, and that Commissioner Mike Payment was somehow involved. Not only is that a false statement, but it contains information discussed, again, in closed session. Whereas the rules for procedure for Kirtuck County Board of Commissioners is codified in Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2 of the Kirtuck County Code of Ordinances, otherwise known as the Rules of Procedure. And pursuant to Section 2-70, all actions by the Board shall proceed by a motion and a second, and that motion shall be adopted by a majority of votes cast unless otherwise required by this division or state law. Commissioner Paul Beaumont violated the Rules of Procedure by involving a company called Insight Global in the Kirtuck County's manager job posting without any motion or vote by the Board of Commissioners. Whereas pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, a public body may hold a closed session and exclude the public to prevent disclosure of confidential information, which includes consideration of qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, and conditions of appointment of an individual, public officer, or employee, and pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A-98. Employee personnel records are confidential, specifically internal communications concerning an employee, and only open to inspection in certain circumstances. Commissioner Paul Beaumont violated the General Statute listed above by improperly disclosing contents of communication made during the closed session held on October 16th, 2023, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.116. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Kirtuck County, North Carolina, that section that Commissioner Paul in Beaumont is hereby censured, and his actions set forth in this resolution is hereby repudiated, is not befitting a county commissioner, bound to uphold the laws of the state of North Carolina, and bound to follow the Code of Ethics. The Board of Commissioners reminds Commissioner Paul in Beaumont to weigh carefully his responsibility to the citizens of Kirtuck County at all times and act in a manner that respects and promotes open government and the public's confidence in the integrity of the office of county commissioner and our county government. This resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of Kirtuck County Board of Commissioners. And that's basically the end of it, other than an adoption by the Board, which would constitute a vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mike.
Could I ask a question? I'd like to ask the county attorney on item three where it mentions me in there. If we, if I could get, or maybe just have a little more explanation, because, I mean, I guess you could read that in a couple of different ways, what that was meant by that, and then maybe offer another sense of explanation to that or something, or...
Sure. So that's in paragraph three where it states that Commissioner Paul Beaumont made false statements to the Daily Advance, and he mentions Commissioner Payment in that same article, somehow acting as if Commissioner Payment was involved in the job posting, which is not true. So certainly, we could tweak that language to say that. I think as it appears now, I believe it does say that, but if we need to be even more clear, we can.
Well, and I'll just comment, and if Paul thinks otherwise, he can comment back, but the phone call was initiated by Commissioner Beaumont to me, and he wanted to discuss an item that was discussed in closed session, and then I see it listed in the newspaper that he made a phone call to Commissioner Mike Payment about a specific item that I'm not going to discuss that was mentioned in closed session. Yeah, and that's, I think that's what that was referring to, and that's the item that really bothers me tonight.
So you in no way had anything to do with this, basically?
No, no, I didn't. You know...
And that telephone call took place well after all this...
It did, it did. Commissioner Beaumont did call me, and he wanted to talk about an item, and Commissioners have had discussions on closed-session items amongst themselves, and I've always kept them to the Commissioners that were involved in the closed session and with the topic that was discussed. And then that specific topic was told to the newspaper, which to me, ethically, I'd never do that, and that's what bothered me, and that particular item there. So I, you know, you just don't, if we're talking about a closed-session item, was this personnel, whatever it might be, items in closed session, you know, I'll be glad to talk to another Commissioner, and I think other Commissioners as well, too, but I think ethically, it's understood, does conversation stay right there if it is a closed-session item, unless I'm wrong, county attorney, that's to stay like that. So to see that show up in the newspaper about that article just bothered me, and I just could not believe that, you know, the closed-session item was actually listed, so that's all I wanted to clarify on that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Kevin, did you have something, or Paul?
I mean, I just, I have a couple of things I just want to say. I mean, do you want to go first? It's up to you.
No, it's fun.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm not making a joke when I say this first statement. I've wrote down some notes and had some stuff with all this. This whole process looks bad on us as a Board. There's a lot of stuff we need to be getting done and doing. I rarely post on social media. I made a comment, and it said how we were all fighting. I think I've probably had arguments with everybody on the Board up here except for you, Owen, and not that I have any ill will towards anybody that I argue with. So I made the comment on social media, and it was in a joking manner because it said, and I don't have to even read it because I remember saying it. You know, they made the comment of us fighting amongst everything and everything, and I said, "Look, I'm not fighting with anyone. I don't have a problem with anyone." You know, even though there were some issues, then I made the joke of, you know, the Fight Club thing, so... But that being said, I just got a few things to say, and then I'll be done. The talking to the Insight Global, I do want to say the one thing, that I do know that when we talked, and I'm not lying for anybody, not that anybody's asked me to lie for anything, but the, that we did talk, but like, you know, and I think me and the chairman just spoke briefly about it, about, you know, and it's nothing, you know, if Ike was here, if Ike retired, I could retire tomorrow. I mean, I could, you know, whatever. So we did make the comment about the thing. I want to put that out there because, you know, when we said if we were looking at a company, you know, and I don't remember the term we said, of just, you know, if somebody's talking to somebody, it needs to be on the super down low. And I mean, I did have that conversation with the chairman, which, you know, we weren't talking about anything bad. We were just talking about in general. That's one. I've already said it, this looks, I mean, my phones rang for like three to four weeks. I had somebody call me the other day and ask me, "Was I okay?" I didn't even know what they were talking about. I'm fine, you know? I'm an open book. But like you said, this is, and Bob couldn't help, he got hurt, and he's had two surgeries and all this stuff, and I'm not going to go into his medical stuff, but like you said, and it took a while for us to have a meeting. You know, it just, I don't know, I just, it looked bad. It just looked bad on us. And the emails I received from business owners, I received from a retired officer in the military, he's real high up, I really, really respect a lot, that sent me an email about this whole situation. And, you know, they basically said they supported me and always had, you know, and I was in a tough situation, which I agree. You know, like I said, I'm friends, colleagues, everybody's sitting up here, and this, it's not fun to discipline somebody or do something to somebody or not do, however it played out. I've already said that. Let me make sure I catch them all. I mean, we just wasted a lot of time and resources on this, and it could have been avoided, you know? And I mean, it's kind of, you know, I mean, it's just, this should have been, I mean, there's a lot to do. I mean, we need to talk about the ramp at the beach. There's so many different things I could talk about. I'm the busiest one up here of everybody. I know that for a fact.
Definitely more than me.
Uh-huh.
Definitely more than me. I'm going to go with my...
You know, and like I said, I just, you know, we got a lot to do. We need to get this done and get it behind us. And like I said, I've coached against Paul, I've coached with Paul. My kids have hunted his property, and I mean, I consider Paul my friend. You know, I don't like this, you know? And I'm, you know, I'm not mad at Paul or nothing, but I mean, you know, there's going to be some stuff that come out that, you know, it's just tough situations between all of us. The only thing that I will say that I don't like that we did, but I know the original one, and this isn't a gig at anybody, like the censor, how it was changed to the most recent, it was more, I don't know what the word I want to look for, but like, I'm for somebody getting their due diligence, whatever, and that's probably the law enforcement side for them to have their fair shake at it. And I'm not saying that it's right or wrong, timeframe, whatever, for him getting that, but I mean, like I said, we've had so much going on, it's just, that's the only thing far as him. I don't like that it was changed, which, I mean, it needed to be changed. I do like the wording and everything better, but I just, I don't know, I'm just, I'm frustrated. It's been like, I don't worry about anything. I hate to say it, and I don't have any anxiety, and this has like really stressed me out, but that comes with the $144 you pay and to sit up here and to deal with it, but... But yeah, like I said, that's pretty much it. I mean, like I said, that's the only thing I don't like of this whole process is, but I get it. I mean, we've had so much going on, and the resources that staff, ourselves, the phone, I mean, like, I can't take a phone call during the day unless I'm on my lunch break at the sheriff's office and talk to somebody, which I'm a little bit bigger, so it wasn't a bad thing for me to miss lunch a couple of days. But, you know, but like you said, it's just, it's tough. I mean, it's just, this whole thing just sucks. I mean, I'll just be blunt and put it out there. But however it goes down or whatever does, we just need to move on. I've had arguments with everybody up here but Owen, and I think we can move on and just go forward and just get it right, and it just looks bad. So that's it for me.
There's that. Commissioner Beaumont?
Thank you. Let me first say that in the interest of brevity, I too have not included everything that I was tempted to put in the statement I'm about to read. Second of all, the oblique reference to you had zero to do with whatever the Daily Advance written, wrote. So I did not intend for that to be implied whatsoever at all. So I, sorry, I didn't even understand how that got, how you got lumped into that. So my apologies for that because certainly you didn't deserve any piece of that. So I have a, I'd like to start off with a question, and this is to our county attorney, and... So my apologies for that, because certainly you didn't deserve any piece of that. So I have a, I'd like to start off with a question, and this is to our county attorney, and it is, would you agree that the school of government is a trusted and reliable resource on legal matters, process and procedures, specific to county government?
Yes.
Okay. And would my fellow commissioners agree to that? That we can rely on the school of government to provide?
You just might not always get the same answer.
Yeah, that's the problem.
That's, I mean, and that's.
They will provide you with an answer.
An answer.
Yes.
Owen?
They will provide you with an answer depending on the type of question you ask them.
Yeah, the political nature of that.
Correct, yes, okay.
It's an opinion. They tell you it's not the law.
Well, I would argue that just about all attorneys generate opinions, don't generate the law. So that would be consistent. So, so topics and subject matter, actually, let me back up. So after speaking with the school of government, after speaking with personal legal counsel that is significantly experienced in the world of county government, and the rules associated with operations both from a closed meeting and open meetings, I have become very knowledgeable about closed sessions and what remains and what doesn't remain. And a lot of it was confirming what, that which I already knew, and that is, when a closed session is held for a specific reason, once a course of action or a solution is come to, or relative to that meeting, then that meeting is no longer protected, unless it has to do with personnel information. That meeting is no longer held secret or private, right? That, the results of that meeting, the minutes of that meeting, which should be, have just as much detail as a typical commissioners' meeting, that that's releasable, and that should be published to the public. You have every right to know what we do in a closed session, as long as it doesn't violate the law?
Paul, I'm going to, are you practicing the law, or telling us what the law is? I mean, you moved into an area that's, I don't believe, we've been counseled many times by two attorneys sitting here, that that is not the case. I mean, we don't release that stuff. We've never released closed session minutes to anyone.
Chairman White, I'd let you speak without interruption, I would ask that you would show me the same courtesy.
I would, except that you're trying to practice the law, it seems now, or telling us what the law is.
If I may continue, right? Your objection is noted, whatever, but I would like to continue. Specifically, a closed session was held on or about October 16th. The Board of Commissioners determined at that time that the county manager's contract would not be renewed. Once the decision had been made by the BOC, the results are no longer, or would not, be protected by the closed session cloak. After confirming with the North Carolina School of Government, prior to any discussion or release of the documents to the Daily Advance, an opinion was received by the North Carolina School of Government, and I'm referring to the redacted letter titled Ike McCree, County Manager, dated 10/23/2023, Notice of Contract Nonrenewal. The opinion states, I believe the redacted letter you attached is public under GS 153A-98B9. Generally, the personnel file information of county employees is confidential under GS 153A98A. Personnel file information is any information collected by a public agency about its employees and used in connection with some kind of employment action. However, subsection B of that same statute acts as an exemption to this general rule and makes several types of personnel file information public, including, in chapter B9, date and type of each promotion, demotion, transfer, suspension, separation, or other change, and position classification with that county. Since the redacted letter provides only the date and type of separation, i.e., nonrenewal of contract, I believe this section applies to make the redacted letter public. Signed, Christina Wilson, Assistant Professor of Public Law in Government. Chapel Hill.
Was that, was that the school government?
Yes. I do not have, nor I have ever had, the authority in any capacity to sign contracts on behalf of the company I work for, or for Kirtuk County. I never provided a job description to Insight Global, which would have been part of any contract. The language Insight Global used in the online posting was actually pulled from the county's own website. As I have stated from the beginning, I asked Insight Global to ghost the position. Ghosting is an industry term that applies to looking for potential candidates before a position opens. Ghosting consists of researching resume databases such as Monster, Career Builder, and Indeed, and is used for informational inquiries before a contract would be entered into. In North Carolina, verbal contracts are not binding. At no time was a pre-oughta performed, which would be a requirement to bind the Kirtuk County. Insight Global is in 35 states and in three countries. Insight Global's only protection of compensation is based on whether or not they have a contract in place. So here are some questions I have, and this is going to specifically address the comment that was made, that every attempt was made to get the information from me. Why is this investigation so incomplete, specifically to the county attorney? Did you request via certified mail for a copy of the contract? The 11 applications you said I was provided by Insight Global have only been mentioned by you? Did you follow up with an email summarizing the conversation you had with Insight Global as to the status and location of the contract you were told I signed, as well as copies of the 11 applicants allegedly provided to me? Have you received the copy of the job position request, which would be a document necessary to post a live job opening that I supposedly signed? Was this communication with Insight Global concerning those supposed 11 applicants followed by any official correspondence, specifically with Insight Global's attorney, Megan Quinn? Did you give consideration to using an affidavit signed by me, authorizing the county to legally demand from Insight Global on my behalf, any and all contracts and documentation between myself and IG? As I understand, and as Commissioner White directly pointed out, I'm not an attorney. I don't attempt to pretend to be one. But as I understand, if I request by law, any contract that I've signed, they're required to provide that. Was a cease and desist notice sent via email or certified mail to Insight Global? Considering the severity of the accusations, the lack of documentation, and the failure to interview me resulted in an incomplete investigation based solely on hearsay, and a lack of supporting documentation, it places me, the defendant in this matter, in a position where I'm forced to prove that a nonexistent contract, nonexistent emails, and nonexistent conversations occurred. How do I prove something didn't happen? What we find ourselves in a legal circle without any factual basis. The U.S. Constitution, to the best of my recollection, placed a legal proof on the accuser, not on the defendant. Shouldn't I be considered innocent until proven guilty? Wouldn't you agree that I've been denied due process due to an incomplete and inappropriate You said to Insight Global, and I quote, "I want to assure you, the county has no issues with Insight Global. This pertains to an internal issue with a board member." Had you interviewed me at that point? Have you interviewed me yet? My first awareness about this rogue job posting came when Bob White called me on the 11th of January to ask if I knew anything about the job posting. I did not, and promptly called Mrs. Gabby Gilbert from Insight Global at 5:47 in the evening to ask if the job posted for Kirtuk County manager originated from Insight Global. She then texted me at 5:55 and said, and I quote, "Paul, can you please send me the job posting so we can try and see where it is coming from?" So I ask, why would I be asked to send a copy of a job posting that they posted if they weren't aware of it? Ms. Morgan, would this not exchange, not prove, that I didn't know that this job posted? And by the way, this is in our packet, and it's, I can't tell what page number it is, it says two at the bottom, but these aren't consecutively, or the success. It's in the text messages. My response to her, by the way, was, I saw it yesterday, it is from Insight Global Recruiter, I'm going to have to play fireman. The comments from my fellow commissioners were not pleasant, because I confronted her during that phone conversation and said, "You were not authorized to do this," and yet she did. So, continuing, are there any emails that indicate that I did arrange for this job posting? Doesn't this text exchange also prove that Mrs. Gilbert was unaware as well? Mackenzie Boland, who was on that phone call, told me on the night of the 11th that she, and I quote, "had only posted it to her personal LinkedIn profile." Given Insight Global's initial statement to Ms. Morgan, that Insight Global's response, as reported by county attorney, was with human resources, isn't it conceivable that Mackenzie Boland went rogue and was now being counseled by her HR department? In conclusion, I have not violated any laws. I have not violated the oath of office, nor did I act alone. I did not engage in any activities beyond what Chairman White knew of beforehand and had given consent to. Yet Chairman White failed to disclose to the Board of Commissioners in his email to the board when he stated on January 15th that, and I quote, "Paul took it upon himself to engage with a job placement group," conveniently leaving off that he had been briefed the whole time. Later Commissioner White admitted to being informed at the closed session meeting that was held on or about January 15th, I believe.
16.
16.
16.
When I shared with the entire board, Chairman and White had been kept informed all the way. The details I have relayed have remained consistent. My documentation supports my account of the facts. And I asked, I asked my board, I asked Kirtuk County, "Do you think that this was an unbiased investigation?" I don't. Finally, my final conclusion. Kirtuk County, I am sorry for how this all transpired. We have a lot going on in this county, and we certainly didn't need this to distract us from the tasks at hand. I operated in good faith, I didn't do anything without making sure that it was legal, and I can absolutely tell you from this point going forward, I'm not going to participate in discussions that occur under cloak of closed session, that you all have a right to know what went on and what was decided. And I will ensure that this board works together to make sure that we are honest and transparent with you. That's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, here's the other side of the story, which y'all don't know about. Well, I put a little bit in there.
Hey, Bob.
Paul and I did talk about Insight Global, following on the heels of a closed session. That conversation was quick and to the point, and that was that he was going to, he worked with this headhunting group and wanted to talk to them to glean a little bit of information. I said as much in my letter to the public, it's out there. The email he's referring to, my, the reference he made in there was about the job posting, not about him finding out about how much it costs if you have to go through the recruiting process, what that process looks like. This is a general inquiry about dealing with this headhunting group. None of us up here have dealt with the headhunting group, except Commissioner Beaumont. So my email was, and his quote was taken completely out of context, it was in direct involvement with this job posting being created. He wants to talk about he didn't know the job was being created. Well, there's a couple of messages that took place while I was on vacation with my family. Starting on January 2nd, following the holidays, Gabby reaches out to Paul. "I hope the holidays were good to you and your family. I wanted to reach out to see if we could get something on the calendar this week to go through the accounting manager details. Let me know if you have any available at this time of week, or I'll send over, and I'll send over a calendar invite." She's got some information wrong in there. Clearly, a conversation is taking place outside of these emails, a phone conversation for something. Unless I'm wanting here, send in the calendar invite. Paul comes back with an email to her same day at 9:20 a.m. "Gabby, the sooner the better. The position is county manager." He corrects her in the position listing. How about tomorrow afternoon? Gabby comes back again, you know, great, and Paul comes back again. She asked about if it's for the city of Kirtuk. Perfect, I just sent over the email invite, would this position be for the city of Kirtuk? He comes back and says, "No, it's Kirtuk County, NC." And then another email, the final email from Gabby is, "Okay, cool, I think we're fully set up to support you guys to begin with. However, I am," to begin with, she's missing some period in here, comma, "I am confirming with my portfolio manager to make sure we have everything in order to prevent hiccups." I have talked to this board at, you know, at length and about my, what I knew Paul was doing, it was about this much. At some point, clearly, a conversation took place, and these emails back and forth started, and then a telephone call goes out from Paul in the call log to Gabby shortly on the heels of this. So this is not about Megan, she was directed to do stuff by the Board of Commissioners. This is not about, you know, she talked to the employees over there. I'll remind everybody, this is a corporate entity that is going to protect themselves, they're not going to give out information. There is no contract, because there was no contract, but clearly, clearly, there was something going on with creation of a position for county manager. I mean, they took it upon themselves to go look up the starting salary for that, to go find information off of our website, and compile the data for a job that didn't exist. It is one thing for us to have a conversation in closed session about what happens when we've, many times, and Paul has brought this up many times, what happens when the proverbial busts? Ike walks out here tonight, gets hit in the dark, boom, we don't have a county manager. As a matter of fact, one of the things that came out of that closed session, which can be public information, is that we asked Ike to prepare a succession plan, basically, if we had a vacancy, a quick vacancy, for whatever reason, so that the Board of Commissioners has a few steps to go by in the future. It's prudent planning on our part. I will again go back to section two of this document, this censured document. It was, it is stated in here, Paul Beaumont began conversations with them. It became clear through those conversations that something had caused this job listing to be created. There's no one else to talk to Insight Global except for him, and this job listing was created. We tried to provide every opportunity to go into closed session, and we in fact did go into closed session with Paul and ask him about this, this very thing. We all agreed we needed more information, we asked the county attorney to look into it. She did, she talked to numerous people there, and their stories were all the same. So either three people, including an attorney, and I'll ask the attorneys, what happens if you get caught lying or making false statements and you have to go for peer review? It's not going to be good, I'm assuming, from, going from a legal board, right? You guys have peers that review your stuff, and you can be reported for doing those things. So this attorney has obviously talked to her employees as well, and talked to our county attorney. So she was kind enough to send over screenshots of text messages and a few emails, but that was as far as they were willing to go as a corporate entity. So, you know, when Paul, some Paul's assertions, they're not even in this document. It was, it was his, his working with this company that got to the point of this job being created. He didn't, it wasn't, they shouldn't even have known we were looking for a county manager. just an executive level position, potentially an executive level position. So it has created a major problem with our staff here in this county. Our team leaders, our department heads, Ike McCree. You know, I don't even know what he's gone through over the last month dealing with this. He's been stalwart and forthright through it all and has served this county admirably for thirty, going on thirty years now, off and on. And, and stepped up at a time when he needed to fill this position. So with that being said, I don't have anything else to say other than this is not about Megan. She did the best she could with the information that she could get from this company and put that information in an email, in a timeline, all of it together for us. Kevin, I do want to take a second to address, you know, we, the original censure document we had didn't quite fit based on other information. So we changed it, but the meat of the document is the same.
Pretty much.
We, we didn't change a whole lot. And so it, it wasn't anything earth shattering that, that needed a bunch of time for review. Clearly, Paul is prepared this evening and has shown that through his comments this evening. It even shows on the county, on their, on their website, this, this LinkedIn page or wherever, we found it, and it shows 11 applicants were there. So, you know, whether or not Paul reviewed them or not, I don't know. I'm going to guess that this company also has a page, a landing page where you go in and review stuff. Like every other company I've ever dealt with as far as Indeed or Monster. Those guys create pages where you come in and you address stuff through that. They, they hold that information back and it, and it is there for review. But that's, that's not the meat of the problem. The meat of the problem is that this job was created, shouldn't have been, and it was through Commissioner Beaumont's relationship with this company. Yes, I knew about some portion of it and it was very infinitesimal at best. As I said, I wasn't even around when this, when this was going down. The other thing is, is false statements is another part of this to, to the daily advance. And, you know, we have attorneys here to provide us information. We can only rely on, on, on our attorney's experience and training to know that we have done what we should do. We would have handled this in closed session, most likely. This would have been not dealt with in a public spotlight had you not taken this public. You did that. No one else did. You didn't afford us the opportunity to come back. We had that little brief meeting where we canceled. And I said, we need more information, wouldn't you agree? And you said yes. I have acted fairly with you. I have admitted that I did have a conversation with you at every point. I have tried to do everything that I could to have this stay in closed session until it was time to maybe not come out of closed session, or maybe it stayed in closed session, and the world would never know. Yet here we are tonight.
Well, Chairman White, that's an interesting perspective. Including a whole lot of, you know, insinuations or assertions or, and allow me to go.
Good. Good night.
Like first of all, where are the facts? Where are the facts? I haven't seen a single one of these twenty, these 11 applicants, nor would I have. Where's the, where's the protection that Insight Global would have to not, to get paid? And Commissioner White, you seem to minimize the conversations and try to trivialize.
Not at all.
That I called you with, hey, they came up with two resumes. You don't remember that?
I do, I was actually waiting on it.
So one was an accountant, which was completely unqualified. One had potential. And then there was a third one that I told you I haven't seen the resume on.
Yeah, and what was mine in that conversation?
Commissioner White?
What was mine in that conversation? That we were nowhere near hiring a county manager. We were nowhere near removing our county manager.
I wasn't insinuating that we were.
Right. You had gone way outside.
Commissioner White? Okay, so nonetheless, you and I had a discussion and said, okay, what are we looking at for the next steps? And you said, you know, the next thing we need to do is get the entire Board of Commissioners involved. Would be the next step, whenever that occurred. To which I have an email from Insight Global that clearly said before this broke that they looked forward to setting up an opportunity to meet and discuss what that process looked like. Not that they were doing it, not that they had already sent out the application or sent out the job posting. But that here's the process when you use a technical recruiter. To, to insinuate that somehow I caused a multi-state international company to go job searching without any promise of compensation is ludicrous. Now as to took it public, during our closed session meeting, a comment was made that Commissioner Etheridge, I guess, misunderstood what I was implying or what I was saying. And basically, with the look of horror on her face about how I might have read emails, told me everything I needed to see and that was, or I needed to know. And that's, I would like to see those emails. So I asked and you agreed, Megan was there. I'm sorry, county attorney, said that I should be, you said I should be able to see those emails. Now, I, I guess it correctly assumed that you would forward them to me or the county attorney would. I made a comment to Commissioner Jarvis as well. Now, I guess I should have been more blunt, but I guess, you know, I thought that my request was pretty clear. But having not received any response to that, and then following a noticeable silence and questions I had towards the county attorney, I submitted a public records request. That public records request arrived on a Thursday or a Friday, I'm not sure. But I knew nothing. On the way to watch my granddaughter play basketball, I found out some of what was included in those emails. Including our county attorney drafting, volunteering in drafting the original letter of censure. So to suggest that I'm the one that allowed that in the public space, I would offer in those emails, Commissioner White, you yourself mentioned Ike's contract. And maybe we should have done a better job before releasing those emails, if that's what we intended to keep out of the public's eye. But the reality is, unbeknownst to me, and I would offer the rest of this board, I was not aware we had a public repository for public records requests. If you submit a public records request, it is on a website, a webpage, where anyone can go and look at it. And there are some people that like to look and see who's asking for what. Now you can insinuate I'm the one that released that all day long. The cool facts are, I absolutely did not.
Can I ask the attorney something?
Sure.
As far as that website he's talking about, which me and you talk every day about public records through the sheriff's office, not this matter. Is all that, I mean, I know when we send out stuff, they're not seeing what we send out to the person for, I mean.
Yes, they are. If it's a public record, it gets disclosed and anybody can see it.
Okay, I didn't know even the, even the emails as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Mike? Got a question for, I guess, the county attorney. Listening to Commissioner Beaumont, he, he brought up some statutes and some items. I guess a couple of them got me thinking, and I guess I need some clarification. I guess, and I don't, I can't remember which ones they were, Mr. Beaumont.
I Googled them.
But there's one that states that certain items from a closed session can be released if it's not personnel matters. Is that a true statement?
Which statute?
Um, yeah, because, because that, that, I would say, I'm not a lawyer, but I didn't, I've never heard that one before. I'd just like to know if that's true or not.
I would need to look closely at the statute.
What's that?
I would need to look closely at that statute to be able to answer that question.
Well, and that, now that's the part that I'm starting to just, if, if that is a true statute, I'd like to understand the meaning of that. Because this is the first I've heard that statute. As long as I've been a commissioner, like I said, I've never heard that about a closed session. So if he, if it's there and he's found it, like I said, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know it. But if it's there, I'd like some, I'd like just, I want to understand that a little bit more.
So I can read the statement again. I can give you the, the general statute.
I mean, I'd like to do the statute.
But the gist.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Paul, just one second.
I'll give you 35 years of experience.
Okay, that's okay.
We have another attorney.
Closed session information may be publicly disseminated under certain circumstances. It depends on the purpose for the closed session. For example, personnel matters are not to be disclosed to the public, ever, except for those specific items that are set forth in the personnel statute. And that's very limited information. Secondly, litigation matters. Those matters are not subject to disclosure to the public until such time as in three years after that litigation is over. So that means all the trial and appellate matters have been, have ended. Economic development purposes. You may go in to discuss whether you're going to, the, the location of business or industry in the county, and whether you're going to offer an incentive or some other type of enticement for them to, to locate here. That also is not to be released to the public for so long as, as released would frustrate the intent or purpose for the closed session. So once you made a determination that you're going to provide an incentive and you have a public hearing on those incentives, that obviously then it becomes public, and those minutes would be subject to release. The other reason that you typically go into closed session is to discuss or instruct negotiating agents on behalf of the county relative to the acquisition of an interest in real property. You're going to be doing that, in fact, on Monday night. You would not normally release that information either until such time as you have entered into a contract with the party with whom you intend to acquire the real estate interest. So there are different levels and different times in the continuum where information may be released. But there's also information that shall never or will never be released.
So any discussions regarding personnel, no matter what those discussions may be, if it's referencing personnel matters, that is never to be released? Is that what I'm hearing?
There should not be any release of, of, of whatever the board might be discussing relative to that.
To personnel matters.
However, there is the list delineated, as Mr. Beaumont discussed previously, of certain information that is subject to release. And if it's not that information, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
So for example, specific instances of violation or misbehavior or things that would result in personnel actions, that is never releasable.
So actions that the board is discussing based on actions is not releasable?
Actions, it depends on the case and depends on the instance. In this case, date and type of each promotion, demotion, transfer, suspension, separation, or other change in position classification with that county, the redacted letter complied with the exception. Personnel file information public, including, right? But there is an exception to the general rule that makes that releasable. And that's the modification of a contract. His contract, the, the nature of his contract is public record.
But we have model.
I don't want to get into the debate, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
But also the requirement, in order for there to be a final action, that there be a vote. And the board only takes a vote properly when there is a motion, a second, and a vote.
And that did not occur.
Subsequent to a vote, there should be the production, creation and production of minutes. I would suggest to you that there is no such creation of minutes because there was no vote that was legal.
May I?
Mr. Chairman?
Matt, Matt? Yes, Katie?
Vote must take place on an open meeting, should it not?
Correct. Yeah. It has to be at an open session.
Miss, Miss Katie, you had something?
And we've been speaking about that you were given the notice of non-renewal of your contract. And I think that it's come out. If you look at the bottom of that, that was given to the, whatever you want to call them, it says remaining the manager will depend on how you respond to the critiques and the changes that you make. The BOC will be meeting again in January to critique your responses for the renewal. So that right there proves that we never voted on it. And we never voted on it, even in the closed session. We were asked our opinion and there was quite some discussion on it.
Are, are we getting into a lot of closed session discussions that probably we shouldn't be?
We are.
Well, it's open.
I mean, I'm just, well, I mean, I mean, there's certain things that have been laid out there, but there's certain things that haven't. So I'm just asking the question.
Right.
For ethics, ethical standards.
At the, at the end of the day, uh, well, you know, so to answer some of your stuff, Paul, when you wanted that information, I spoke to Megan about it, the emails to the public. We had a string of emails amongst us, not including Paul, because we had to discuss things. Matter of fact, my very last thing, I, I always play devil's advocate in everything we do. And my, I, I laid out a list of things that we could potentially do. And the last thing I said was do nothing. The very last thing I said was do nothing. That's been left out of this conversation. And, and the board responded to me. And we, you know, obviously, we were going to have a closed session with Paul, and that's the way the board wanted to go and get his side of the story. We were not going to take any action, but, but it was important to, to play devil's advocate and throw things out there to get people thinking. So, you know, Megan, the county attorney, requested that those, that you do a FOIA request for those emails. I'm not sure why, I didn't ask her, just said, okay. I did the same thing of you when we wanted to try and gain more information to see if you had anything on your personal devices. And so both of us did. Yeah, it could become public. But, but by the time that, that those emails were out there, this, this thing was already spinning out of control. And shortly thereafter was, was public information. And it's, it's just, this is a sad state of affairs that we're here tonight dealing with this for an hour. It shouldn't be. We should not be. So I don't have anything further to add other than, yes, I knew Paul was going to talk to Insight Global to glean information about the company and, and how they work. And, and that's about it. We subsequently had a conversation when I came back from vacation. He called me and told me that they actually had three people. And one of them was this and one of them was that. And I, and I was, I was floored at that moment. It kind of took me back a second. And, and then I said, well, Paul, we haven't, we're not getting rid of the manager. We, you know, we haven't done anything. We haven't created a job listing. We haven't created a position. We don't even know what kind of person we'd be looking for if we met as a board to, to look at this. So that conversation just went in, out the window. And I haven't thought about it until pretty much tonight, to be brought it back up. But I at no time had any inkling of the level of conversation that was taking place. Clearly, Ms. Gabby did in these emails where she's talking about creating this position, and he had to correct her on the frickin' title of the position. There were other emails floating around or whatever, but, but this is the important one. Something was being created. Something inspired them to do this. Something inspired someone to take action and actually create a job listing with a salary structure. And there's only one person in this room that dealt with that company. So that is why we're here tonight. In addition to other things, false statements that were made in the media and the press. So those are the, the cornerstones of this particular document and why we're here tonight to discuss this censure. And as far as we've all known, and, and I attest to this evening with 35 years of experience, these documents should not have been public information. Some of the stuff, even the redacted portions of it, should not have been public information. We're talking about Ike, like I said, a man that served this county a very long time and was due the, due the respect of, of an honest and forthright review. And then come back to him. And we weren't able to do that because of all that is going on. Megan has not been able to concentrate on her job. Ike has not been able to concentrate on his job. The county has come to a standstill. We haven't had a meeting in over a month. So, you know, everything has stopped because of this. It's, it's consumed an incredible amount of time, yours as well. Not making light of, of any, of your time. And we need to put this behind us. And so I'm, I'm basically done talking about this.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. We do need to put this behind us. And again, I want to go back to the text exchange with Gabby, who was the account manager. And after confronting her and Mackenzie, who dialed in or was added to that, they had no idea how this job had been posted. Except that Mackenzie then admitted that she had put it only on her individual LinkedIn page.
So they did have an idea how the job was created. Because she put it on her page, she admitted that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still talking.
But, but to your point.
I agreed, right? Agreed. So, but Gabby, the account manager, Mackenzie's boss, then texted me and said, "Can I please send her a copy of the job posting so they can try and see where it's coming from?" So, if that doesn't speak that the account manager was in the, was in, was not informed, I don't know what else there is. They're claiming 11 applicants. You said that I must have some kind of secret way of going to look at them? Never in my interactions with them is that even how that, that thing works. And they're certainly not going to do it without a contract. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, I too think we've spent enough time on this.
You know, and I do, and I just, I guess Commissioner Beaumont, I guess there might have been a way we could have just, or you could have just, hey, how would you go about, you know, acquiring a position for a government job and then leave it at that?
There were, there were several things, and Commissioner White was in the loop on it, was what is out there? Those that are not familiar with LinkedIn, you can put a profile, you can put your resume, and then there's a block where you click, "I'm looking for work." What they were supposed to do, it's called GOES, is to go look who's out there, whose resume is qualified, and are they looking for work? Referring to the email that, that Commissioner White brought up, that was making sure that they're looking for the right kind of people to see if they're out there. Because again, I want to remind Currituck, we were told there aren't any, that there are no county managers, there are no assistant county managers, that there's a huge shortage of them. Commissioner White and I had the discussion, maybe we bring in something different. Maybe we bring in somebody that's experienced in business, and we take a different approach if the county manager position needs to be backfilled. There was no timeline as to how soon that would be. We honestly hadn't gotten that far. Anyway.
It's just as heartening, you know, the, as long as I've been a commissioner, I know we've, we've had, we've had acted on, we've had closed sessions on other, you know, elected officials. We've had, we've had a censorship of Owen Etheridge a few years back regarding some actions he did. I mean, we even recently had the, took action on the registered deeds, you know, for falsifying documents, or my caller husband sent to the county, we had to act on that. Now, we've got to deal with this. So, it's just, you know, it's just heartening that we've got to keep going through things like this and.
And Commissioner Payman.
You're right.
And Commissioner White, you're right, right? This should never have gotten to this point, which, again, I kind of speak to the due process thing. If you'd have brought me in, vice chair brought me in and said, "Hey, do you have any idea what this is?" Because I believe we have a case against Insight Global. Because they went hog wild, which is why their attorney got involved. But it doesn't help when we say we have no issues with you.
Well, we did bring you in. We had a closed session with you. We sat down with you and asked you about this. Did we not?
We did.
Right. So, we did do that. We did that, what you just said. We had a closed session with you, started out there. We had another closed session, which I had to call short because more information came in, and we clearly did not have a picture. And I wanted to have more information so that we could sit down with you and have a conversation. It was very cordial. There was no, right? I, I don't, you know, I've, I've tried my best to remain equal and cordial and not put a motion into any of it or be upset about it. And so, anyway, we did do that.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
As a county attorney before we, I guess, vote or so forth? I'm reading this on page, and I mean, this packet, I know some of it we can't see, but there's a post on January 4th, and obviously, I can look at text messages to see who's sending and who's receiving. Basically, it just says, there, these texts came from Insight Global or from Paul?
Insight Global.
So, there's a text on, and I don't have to read it, on January 4th, where it goes into detail about updating stuff. I don't think, I'm not, that's not violating anything, is it? Are you saying that? Okay. And then there's another one, because it's very light and I have good vision. January 9th, 8:30, it says, "Good morning." That's them reaching out again. And I can't see, then there's a third one, which there's no response from him to them on the 11th. "Paul, can you please send me the job posting so we can try, see where it's coming from?" That's, I guess, after it came out. What's the date? Is that the 13th where he responds? I can't see that on my sheet because it's like super. And I didn't read my readers. But it looks like it's Saturday, the 13th. Or never mind, this is better. Yeah, it would be Saturday, two days, yes. So, is that two days later? Because there's no date on that one. Is that, that's Thursday, the 11th?
Right.
So, it's two days later.
That's what it appears to say.
Oh, yeah, because I can't see them. That's all I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
I updated all my requirements for the county.
And there's also provided as well, I don't know if you saw the screenshots of phone conversations. That's what those next pages are.
Yes, I saw those. I mean, reading it from my phone is a little different than, but like I said, I just was curious on the, I know there was some phone.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, this whole situation, in my opinion, has come to light and come to be a problem because we aren't, as a seven-body member, all included. And I was duly selected as vice chair by this board, but no one bothered to ever have a conversation with me. And I can't help but wonder, since all of this information has been disclosed, if it's because they were afraid with me, of me disagreeing, that they didn't want my opinion, that my opinion is irrelevant, as was Commissioner Kitty Etheridge and Mike Payman. That's a real problem for me. As someone who is elected as an equal up here, I think I am always owed the right before any action, whether full-fledged recruiting, putting feelers out there. I think as a seven-member body, we all have the right to be included on every action, not emails where I am excluded because maybe I am running for an office that someone else seeks. I get very upset when I am excluded as a member and discounted as a member of this body, and I think that is why we are here today. I think if everything was out in the sunshine and the seven of us all included, we would not be having this conversation. And that's why I feel like, as a body, we are broken. If you are afraid to include people with conversations because you, you know they're going to disagree with you or give you the downside, that's a good thing. That's a good thing to hear the opposite side. And I would charge this board, regardless of the actions we take tonight, to be considerate and include everyone's opinion, whether you know they're going to agree with you or not. It is time that everybody's voice, we are a representative democracy. We are elected to be your voice, and my voice is supposed to be the voice of the southern end of the county. Well, let me say this, when I'm excluded, you are excluding everybody south of Grandy. And I am tired of it, and I want this board to function as a body who respects one another and who includes one another. And that's all I want to say.
Well, Selena, I apologize to you, Mike, Kitty, and I meant it when I apologized to them. I have never, ever intentionally excluded anyone from anything other than these emails. And you can leave if you need to laugh and get out, because you don't have a clue how many calls and emails I get. I know Mike does, and it was never my intent to exclude. I hold Ms. Kitty and Selena and Mike in very high regard. I call Mike quite a bit. He's my sounding board on a lot of things. I've talked to Selena more than I've talked to my wife in the last couple of weeks, and it has never been my intent to, to do that to any board member here. And so, you know, can I be a human being and make a mistake and not call you? Yes, I can do that. Because I've talked to so many people, it's unbelievable, the number of calls you get as chairman. And I have to go around and call every single board member and rehash the stories like Groundhog Day. I can't tell you how many times my wife and son have sat in the car and they're like, "Jesus, are you done yet?" Because it's Groundhog Day. I repeat the same story six times to get everybody on the same page. Well, I don't have time to maybe email, or maybe it shouldn't be emailed, so it's not part of the public record, because we just need to have a conversation about something. So, I will publicly apologize now for that. It is never my intent. As I said, I, I respect you all very much and have worked well with you over the years and, and tried my best, when you came on this board, to help you get up to speed, to give you all the information I could. So, if that's not good enough, I don't know what is, and I will gladly step down out of this headache in a heartbeat.
So, I just, I'm not putting the blame on you. I'm putting the blame on conversations that happen without the knowledge of all of us. And I just think that we have all got to, and, and that goes to the heart of this matter. You know, this company, I, I guess maybe they do just act on a whim, but it doesn't, nothing has answered, how do they know what to post, who to post for? I mean, there's obviously a conversation about a county manager. There's obviously a conversation about it, about what we're looking for. Those didn't happen by accident. And it's, it's been, as everybody else has pointed out, it has been a very trying month since this has been going on. And I do want us to move forward and function as a board, because as many of you have said, we have a lot of important work to do.
Okay. Well, we have pretty much beat this horse, I think, and talked and talked it out at this point, and we need to get out of here for the school board. Any final thoughts from any commissioners?
I just want to say what you said. I, I mean, like, whenever I call Selena, when I call, Ms. Kitty, I apologize, you're always called last. It's not the personal.
You don't even call me.
I've called you plenty of times. It's not about.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right. Okay. Well, we have an item on the agenda tonight before us. You know, there, there are going to be unanswered questions. This is not a court of law. This is not used to throw Commissioner Beaumont off of the Board of Commissioners. Clearly, something has gone on behind the scenes that the board was not aware of. There are ways to spin any of these emails and conversations, and, you know, I guess the question is, which one, which one is real? The one where it says, "I updated all requirements for the county manager, opening with edits from the phone call earlier." Whenever you review it, just give me the thumbs up, so I can get approval from my sales manager to begin working on it. That could be the GOES thing that Paul's talking about. We'll never know. It's, it's up to his word and then, and then the what's in print here. And as I said, we're talking about a relationship he had with Insight Global that causes to happen. There was, there was a causal factor in all of this, and he's at that, that causal factor. He's in it somewhere. So, with that being said, Paul, any final thing from you? I mean, I don't want to not give you every.
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
Okay. Well, we have an agenda item before us. I guess at this point, then we just need to move on this or not. And so, I need a, a motion for approval or denial. It could go either way, depending on what the board's deliberation is, or we don't have to act on this tonight. We have the element of time. We do need to get this behind us. I think that he will move on as a board, one way or the other. So, we can weigh this and take a vote on it at our Monday meeting, if we want to, at a future date.
Mr. Chairman, because of the timeline, the evidence that was presented tonight, the phone call logs and everything, I move to accept the resolution that Currituck County Board of Commissioners censoring Commissioner Paul M. Beaumont.
Okay. Do we have a second, Sebby?
Let me just say, as much, what this boils down to is stuff got out. I don't know how it got out. It got out, well, we've been talking about how it got out. It really should have been, and as long as I've been on this board, we have never had closed session, stuff come out like this. And it's just been, it's a tarnish. And after hearing everything, and there's a lot of stuff laid out, but ultimately, you know, and, and stuff has just been in the papers, stuff got out there. You know, I know it wasn't for me, and I know it probably was for the commissioners, so there are some facts that are hard to deny on some of this. So, I guess, based on that, I'm going to go ahead, I'll, I'll second the resolution for censorship.
Okay. All right. I guess we'll just vote on this and move on.
Discussion.
Mind we can do discussion?
Since I wasn't going to say anything, since my name was brought up, that I was censured five years ago on allegations. I never saw a copy of the censure resolution till the night it was presented to this board. I was afforded the opportunity and talked to by the chairman and vice chairman a couple of weeks beforehand, but I was not included in any of the emails that was backing forth between the board members on that situation. And I would like to just add that that took place five years ago, and I've yet to see any monetary benefit from what I was accused of doing. Thank you.
I'd like to put on the record on that. I, I didn't, due to the lack of evidence of the censorship towards Commissioner Etheridge, I did not vote to censor him.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Post?
Nay.
All right, we have two nays. Okay, we have one more.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a roll call on that, please.
Okay. Those that said aye? Myself, Owen, and the nays are Kevin McCord and Paul Beaumont. Okay, next item, we're going to run on, show it on time here tonight. That item was to take action to remove Commissioner Beaumont from his boards if this motion passed, and it did, from his advisory boards for his role. Does the board want to deal with that tonight?
Can I make a suggestion or make a motion that we table the second resolution to maybe our next meeting to give us time to then just think about if, if, if the censorship was enough or.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer, let's get it over with, one way or the other. I would also call to mind that when Commissioner Etheridge was censured, no discussion of removal from boards was even entertained by this board. So, as a moment of fact.
Motion.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion on the table from Commissioner Payman to hold this over to our next meeting, which is Monday, January, or February, excuse me, 19th, just so we have a date, time, and specific. We have a second from Commissioner Jarvis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Nay.
Aye.
Oops.
We have one, any posts? We have one no. So, we'll deal with this at our next meeting. To the public, before we close out this evening, I can't sit here for very long as chairman, so our next meeting, Monday, is going to be a hybrid shortened-up meeting. We're going to do some, some of the heavy lifting, I guess, early on in that meeting, and then we will have a second meeting later in the week. So, while I have the board here, so we're not going until midnight Monday, because it's a very burdensome meeting. Would Wednesday or Thursday evening for continuation work for everyone? If you want to check your calendars so that, what's that?
I can't do Wednesday or Thursday.
Can't do Wednesday or Thursday.
Back-to-back nights?
I mean, we could do that, too.
It doesn't matter to me.
I mean.
Is Tuesday work?
I can do Tuesday.
Paul?
I need to check the schedule, but I don't have access to it.
I can do Tuesday.
All right, so, well, tentatively, with the reason I'm bringing this up, we have applicants that are going to be here Monday or need to be here Monday, and we want to let them know when to come back, and obviously, we have to have staff allocations as well for that. So, Commissioner Beaumont, I guess you'll get back to us via email when you have a chance to check your calendar.
That's the 20th, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn then, please?
I move.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.